Thank you everyone for being here. We'll start our Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for joining us. If I can have you please rise to the platter. If I could, just unanimously consent by a show of hands and the Board of Education trustees that we can diverge a bit from our current agenda, just a show of hands. Thank you all. Firstly, as a school district and as a Board of Education, as a mom, as a graduate, we want to extend our acknowledgements to the Rock family on the loss of their daughter Marissa and to the McCullen family on the loss of their son Danny. They are both graduates of our schools. Their families are both local and we are all mourning alongside of them. We are also wishing our fellow trustee, Holly Estefas, with our well wishes that she is home and recovering following a medical procedure, and we look forward to having her back with us in February. So at this stage, we would like to discuss the resignation of trustee Michelle Schaefer. There have been quite a few things that have been spoken about and discussed in the community, so I did want to take a moment to address a few of those things. Firstly, just to have an understanding of how our Board of Education operates. We operate under strict legal open meeting laws. And what those mean is that the conversations of the Board of Ed outside of executive session, which are legally protected content, have to be done in public. The Board of Education has full reign to discuss really whatever we like at any of our board meetings. We can put anything on our agenda for discussion amongst ourselves. Of course, we always look to gain consensus around ideas and options for the district. And we also have committee meetings. So we discuss in public curriculum, facilities, budgeting, audit, which is our only private meetings. We also have policy, technology, public relations. We have reps that sit on our CPC board as well as our safety committee. And all of that is required to be done in public, and our committee meeting information is then brought back here to the board table. And so there were a few things that were also brought up in the community. One being a busing issue, so I did want to address that with everyone. The school itself provides instruction for students, 12 months for certain students qualified. We also run our own internal summer programs. And I think the issue at hand is something called a gap program. Now, the town of Oyster Bay runs a summer program for special education students. It is a free summer camp, and it is a private camp outside of the district. We have nothing to do with it. We do not run the camp. We do not staff the camp. We do not have an alliance with the camp. But for whatever reason, for some years, there were multitudes of students that were being bused to this program. The Board of Education was informed by our legal counsel that this is something called theft of funds. And basically what that means is that our taxpayers' dollars were being used for a program that was not a school program, and therefore should not be utilized. And that was to the tune of between $35,000 and $40,000 a year. And so it was brought to the attention of the Board of Education. It was brought to the attention of the administrators. It was discussed. And that information was disseminated to every single Board of Education member from our legal counsel down throughout the Board of Education. And we stand with our counsel on it. There was also talk about TAs and after-school programs. We're very fortunate. This district pays for free after-school programs and clubs from eighth K through 12. We have different clubs that go on. They are staffed by the school. Any children can attend. They get into the programs. We pay for these staff. They're all internal staff. We have the security here at the, excuse me, at the schools. We have our custodial staff on hand. But there are outside organizations that utilize our space, one being the parent council. And our parent councils run the after-school activities program, where they bring in outside companies like Play Nation or tennis clinics, sports companies, art labs, science companies to run instruction in our buildings. Parents pay the parent councils for these after-school activities, and students are allowed to stay after school. The staff is not our own. We do not handle the staff. We do not handle any of their insurance. We simply provide the space, the custodial necessity, and also the security in the building, as we do for a lot of different organizations throughout the community. And so we do not provide staff for those programs. We strictly provide our staff for school-funded, school-run, and school-led programs throughout the district. Whenever we have a resignation on the Board of Education, we are also under strict guidelines on our options. One being we can run an election. The position that is open right now will end in May. So we didn't find it prudent to run an election for a short period of time at the taxpayer's cost. We can leave that position vacant, or we can choose to appoint someone into that role through the end of the term. And we are very proud and excited unanimously this evening to welcome and appoint Ms. Christina Tomlinson to the Board of Education. We are so impressed with her dedication and commitment to the district. Christina has held many roles within many organizations, especially within the parent council. She was also the president of the CPC. She has continued over the years through elementary and middle school to show her commitment, not only for parent council, but on many district-wide committees. She's extremely well-versed in much of the work that we're doing here on the board, and we are very excited to welcome her into our busiest season of the year. So without further ado, I would like to perform the resolution. Being resolved but effective upon the adoption of this resolution, the Board of Education of the Locust Valley School District here with appoints Christina Tomlinson as board member and trustee to fill said vacancy on the Board of Education until May 20, 2025. Congratulations. And low administer your oath on having you join us. And I have a motion. Margaret, I can identify that. All in favor? It is unanimous. Congratulations. And our district clerk Allison will give us to you.
I, Christina Tomlinson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a board member, the Board of Education, Locust Valley Central School District, Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, New York, according to the best I know.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I wanted to leak everyone out.
Welcome Christina.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any public comment? We will move on to our student representative report. Welcome.
Good evening to the Board of Education. We would like to thank you for having us. Firstly, we'd like to recognize the winter newsletter, which came out almost a week ago regarding the new cell phone policy. Speakers who gave input on retaining motion wellness more was released through in details on events currently happening. The arts department has been thriving. Throughout December to March, students involved in IBR have participated in art talks showcasing their favorite pieces from the years in the holidays. In addition, the musical play, Alice in Wonderland, will be performed on January 25th and 26th at 6:00 p.m. Please support these talented performers. No tickets are required.
Locust Valley students are making new strides as in December, students involved in the Distributive Education Clubs of America competed in the regional competition. These students competed against 1,000 others in different industrial categories. Furthermore, on January 9, students involved in Locust Valley's Virtual Enterprise Class attended their first-ever in-person trade show. These young entrepreneurs were able to develop a business idea to present to a panel of judges and gave lots of valuable insight. Lastly, the robotics team had a successful weekend, placing first on both days of this competition and qualifying for regionals. Congratulations and good luck to this team. Thank you again to the board for having us here tonight. As the first month of this new year concludes, we hope to keep this momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you both. Next, we have our superintendent report. Dr. Jena.
Well, thank you to the student representatives. I just continue to just cross off things off of my superintendent's report. You guys are too good. First, I wanted to just take a moment just to introduce Mr. Ken Packard, who is here this evening. He's just going to take a minute, just because I want the board and the community to be aware that under new business, you're going to read about our proposed school calendar. But before we look at that, Mr. Packard is just going to spend a couple of minutes really just describing to the community about remote snow days. So he's been working with the faculty, telling the faculty what this would look like. We just wanted to take a quick opportunity to kind of update the community, the Board of Education, of what a remote day would look like if we already used our snow days or traditional snow days.
Good evening. So with regards to the school calendar, the business office, we work all together in developing and in Locust Valley. We scheduled 182 days a year. The state requires 180, so we build two snow days into the calendar. Those are your good old-fashioned, traditional, school-is-closed, everybody-go-sledding days. So those are the two snow days. Once you get past that, the New York State added the option to go into remote learning. And so we, as a district, after COVID, had developed a remote learning plan. We've since refined that plan to be both age and technology appropriate at each of the different levels, and we would go into that mode for one or two days in excess. And after that, we would have to come up with a longer-term remote plan if there was something catastrophic, like some building or something was under disrepair and needed to be fixed. So we have, we have a basic plan. We're going to be in the elementary schools, communicating that with the parents this coming week. And packets will be going home with students the 31st. So we have a plan in place in the elementary. In the secondary, it's mostly going to be relying on Chromebooks because those kids carry those back and forth, grade six through 12. So we basically took the time to adjust the plan to be in compliance with New York State, make sure that we have a plan in case we use more than two snow days so that we do not have to claw back vacation days that we've already placed on the calendar. Good?
That's wonderful. Thank you. It felt like those snow days. Thank you for incorporating that.
Also, I just really wanted to catch the community up with the Board of Education on our progress with the Leader in Me. This past January 8th and 10th, our trainer Gary McEwee first trained at Bayville Primary for the full day, then he went to AMP on the 10th and trained another full day on the Leader in Me and the Seven Habits of highly-successful people. I also just wanted to inform the board and the community of our recent visitation to the Bellmore School District. Dr. Sam Pino, Ken Packard, Michael Gerfo, Ross Cohen, Kurt Simon, Scott Pelony, Jessica Calabini, Alexis Provedo, Allison Workfield, Gina Schneider, Lisa Morris, Jennifer Morrow, and myself all traveled there. What we're going to do is I've set up a Google Drive because we all were so excited. We took lots of pictures. We walked around. It was a larger building. They had 580 students at this building in Bellmore. And the principal Patty really took us through many of the classrooms. We had opportunities to really speak to the children and the teachers. They have been in implementation since 2015, so this is many, many years of work. But I think, like anyway, when you see the end product of what something could look like, you get really excited, and it gave us a lot of ideas moving forward. We're going to be welcoming Gary back already in February. And what Dr. Sam Pino and I went to all of the grade-level meetings. So Gary met with the building, and he worked with different grade levels. All of our employees came out knowing the seven habits, the hand signs to go with the seven habits to start working with our students. So you will start to see this come home as we progress through the year. And it came through two buildings. Next year, we'll expand to our 3.5 and so on until we work our way up into the middle school. Mr. Sesterek is very excited. However, we do, we are starting to see some of these items get incorporated. So if you do see some children talking about a mission statement in their classroom, that's Stephen Covey's work. You're going to start to see little signs appear in the buildings with the seven habits. So slowly, you will start to see the transformation, most importantly at AMP and BP as we progress. All the buildings eventually are goalable to be have the seven habits Covey tree, where you be able to see and identify all the seven habits when you enter the building. So we are very excited. Also, our students had mentioned when that Mr. Sesterek and myself, in October, we presented up at the New York State School Boards. We have been talking to other school districts, which is really exciting. So next Monday, Mike and I will be presenting to the Ichobah Crane School. The superintendent reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, and we found a mutual date. And we're going to be presenting to them via Zoom, which is really exciting. When you hear from other districts, just like how we went to Bellmore, I think this is where, this is where there's so much power and strength and collegiality and working with other school districts because we learn from each other. That's really, you know, how the system makes all of our kids stronger. And of course, I'm so happy that our students mentioned, you know, our DECA students. And finally, just to make sure who comes to our next board meeting, we're going to be announcing the top 15, so it's going to be pretty exciting. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Trenow. We will move on to board reports, starting with the audit committee.
No report.
And budget and finance committee?
No report.
The curriculum committee did meet recently. One thing I'd love to highlight, we had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Sam Pino about our professional development for our teachers. Dr. Sam Pino has, I will go as far as to say revolutionized professional development here in Locust Valley. The catalog of offerings has grown exponentially. And also, the participation by our staff and administrators has truly grown. So we really are very lucky. You know, we spend so much time and energy talking about growing the programs for our children, but that does require a lot of work behind the scenes of developing our staff and training. And so I definitely thank them for their participation. And I thank you, Dr. Sam Pino and Dr. Trenow, for really driving that. A lot of it is on reading, and also we spoke about lesson planning and differentiation. We even dabbled in utilizing technology and AI, which is very new for us and sometimes very daunting, but how that looks in the landscape of differentiation for students. We discussed briefly some summer reading, coming up with some, some of the lists that are the same across the board. So seeing the same summer reading lesson. So seeing the same summer reading lesson Locas Valley as we do in Bayville, the possibility of maybe giving kids a little more incentive to the books that they'll be reading with upcoming years, so that they'll be able to be a little bit more prepared. And let's see what we have here. And also, just as we continue, it's really creating longer standing planning. So what does the future look like, not only a year from now, but starting to plan curriculum out, three years, four years, five years? Sometimes we have a little few micromanages from the state. They come down with intentional change or take testing away or change requirements, but we really are looking to do some longer planning. And facilities, I believe is our next committee. George?
No report.
Policy committee?
The policy committee met Wednesday morning. Yes, right, the fourteenth, thank you. I was not there. But it was led by Holly and Lauren, and we have a very large policy that we're working on right now, which is student absence. So it's still in the process because it's extraordinarily large and cumbersome. The next policy that will start, we kind of started having conversations at the beginning of this year, we're going to be revising the code of conduct. It has not been looked at in many, many years, and it follows a different process than all of our other policies. So we will be convening in February for that. And again, we'll meet, we'll come back to the table and explain the process of the code of conduct. It's probably going to be a six to eight month project. It's a pretty cumbersome project. As always, we are working through the policy book. We go through the sections and the series, and this board has almost completed the entire policy book. We have, I think, one and a half series left, if I'm not mistaken. So that's pretty substantial work. Many of those policies have not been looked at, some of them for ten or fifteen years. So we were still talking about like CD ROMs in art technology policy, just to give you an idea how it dated sometimes policies to be. So that's that.
Thank you so much, Margaret. If there's no report for professional development or technology, do we have any other reports from the board?
Can I report on the grants here? Or no?
Uh, you want to do it now or you want to do it in the...
Well, I wanted to just, I just wanted to talk about the garden one?
Sure.
Okay. So we secured a garden grant through, to meet the guts, our legislator, for fifty-five thousand dollars last year. The Garden Club and its gardens, I don't know if anyone's ever seen them, are pretty spectacular here. So it was a very specific grant. It had to be used for capital improvements only. And we wrote it, and it has been accepted. It is in the approval stages with the county executive. So we were notified this week that it kind of hit a little bit of a dead end, but it actually didn't hit a dead end. It's just in a holding pattern on the desk of the county execs. So President Themis met with our legislator this week to try and move the process along. Want me to wait on the second one?
Yeah.
Okay. So the second grant that we secured was through our assemblyman Jake Blumcrance. He gave us a twenty thousand dollar grant. It's a different type of grant. It's a grant that we can use the money how we see fit, but it had to be specific to our Operation Democracy work and our Remembrance Project curriculum. This past fall, we ran a civic summit, the first of its kind, on Long Island. We had two hundred and eleven students participating. We met at Nassau Community College. We ran it like an adult conference where the students showed up, they had a late breakfast, they had to dress the best to impress. They had a keynote speaker, who was a professor at Nassau Community College and an expert in constitutional law. They then broke out into four different breakout sessions, two that they chose, they were able to attend to. And we had thirty-five administrators attend that civic summit. So the thirty-five administrators representing nineteen districts across Long Island met with our staff, our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, Joey Anaya, and Jen Massa, and Lisa Tramens? Yes, our whole team was there. And they were able to walk all of these administrators through the incredible work that this district has been doing, partnered with not just Operation Democracy, but the American Legion and Patton Foundation, all centered around civics and civic readiness and civic education as well as history. So we thank Mr. Blumcrance, and I believe we've invited him next month to give us an official gifting of the grants because we finally did see it in our bank accounts. So we have to wait for that to pass in order to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to our elected officials for their support of our district. We are going to move into, we do not have any unfinished business, so we will move into new business, which is the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar. Do anybody want to speak to the calendar? Maybe we've gone through it a bit. This will be, I believe, on the website. Hopefully, as of tomorrow.
Oh, it's your man.
Thank you. And so with the calendar, we definitely try to align with MOSIs along with the, our surrounding districts as much as possible. We may have a few less days in some of the surrounding districts, but with the kids, they definitely look at that as a thing. Thank you. Maybe not so much the parents. Is there any board questions? Comments? We will, and we, this will be on next month's agenda for adoption. So if there's any comments or questions, please feel free to email any of the administrators or board. We're going to move over to the Tax Cap and Budget Overview Presentation. Karen Morashewski, thank you so much.
So really, we're going to be talking about like a work today? So tonight, I am presenting the budget presentation one and the overview of the tax cap. On the agenda, we will go on the following points, the review of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, understanding the tax cap, what it is and how it is calculated for fund balance and reserves. What is our district's challenges ahead as we plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget? And finally, the budget calendar and timeline. Let's begin by reviewing this year's board approved budget. On the expenditure side, we budgeted ninety-six point four million dollars. That reflected an increase of two point six five budget to budget. You can see from the graph on the side, close to seventy-five percent of the budget is allocated to salaries and benefits. Revenue. As we focus on our revenues, when looking at the chart, you can see the vast majority of our revenue comes from the taxpayers. Specifically, our budget, ninety-six point four million dollars, ninety-one point thirty-six percent of our budget is funded by the taxpayers. This is a district snapshot of our enrollment. So what is the tax cap? Let's start by taking a closer look. Back in two thousand and eleven, the property tax cap was signed into law with the purpose of limiting the annual growth of property tax by our local government and school district to two percent for the rate of inflation, C P I, whichever is lower. There are several components of the tax cap calculation. The first is the prior year levy. Then the tax cap growth factor. This is given to us by New York State, and it measures the changes in real property value in the district. We have pilots. Those are payment in lieu of taxes. Currently, the district only has one pilot, which is the Long Island Power Authority. We have Consumer Price Index for the famous two percent. Currently, the average C P I for the year ending two thousand and twenty-four is two point nine five. So the equation is either C P I or two percent, whichever is lower. So the district is going with two percent. Finally, we have our exclusions. That includes our capital, our debt service, any bus purchases, and MOSIs capital expenditures. So let's look at the formula. We start with step one, calculating the adjusted prior year's tax levy. We start with the prior year's tax levy, and then we multiply by the tax base growth factor. And then add the prior year's pilots and subtract the prior year, the prior year's exclusions, which is our debt and our capital. That, and that results in the adjusted prior year tax levy. Step two, we calculate the tax levy limit before the exclusions. So we take that adjusted prior year tax levy, and now we multiply it by the CPI, which would have been two point nine five, or two percent, whichever is lower. So two percent. That results in the tax levy limit before exclusions. And finally, we have step three, calculating the current year tax levy maximum. The tax levy limit before exclusions, and then we subtract out our current year's pilots and add in our current year's exclusions. Again, that's debt and capital, which results in the current year tax levy maximum. So how does this look for our district? Well, we start off with our prior year tax levy, which is eighty-eight million dollars. We multiply it by the tax base growth factor. Again, that's given to us by New York State. The most recently updated was on January twelfth, one point zero zero eight. We're going to add in our pilots, six hundred and seventy thousand, and subtract out our prior year exclusions, which is three point five million dollars. That results in an adjusted prior year tax levy of eighty-six point two million dollars. We're going to multiply it by the two percent, not the two point nine five, by the two percent, which results in the tax levy before exclusions of eighty-seven million, eighty-seven point nine million dollars. We're going to subtract out our current year's pilots and our current year's exclusions, which results in the current year's tax levy maximum of eighty-nine point nine million dollars, which is a levy increase of two point one one percent. I just want to highlight that this is an estimate. These numbers are still moving. So fund balance. What is fund balance? Fund balance is the accumulated excess of revenue or expenditures made in fund. It serves as a measure of our financial health and the flexibility of the district. It's classified into four categories. Non-spendable, which includes things like prepaid expenses. Stricken. These are reserves that set up for specific purposes. Assigned funds. This is, this comes from our prior year's progresses. And finally, we have the unassigned. This is essentially the New York State's approved rainy day fund, which should be, which should know, should know, be no greater than four percent of the following year's budget. So now let's take a moment to review prior year lookback of the district's reserves and fund balance. There are a few points I'd like to highlight. First, you will see that balance at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, the total reserves and fund balance is twenty-five point six million dollars. I'd like to also point out our unassigned fund balance of three point eight five million dollars was, was equal to four percent, which was in full compliance of New York State law. And finally, you'll notice that the majority of our reserves are allocated to the capital reserve. I'm mentioning this because the next slide is our proposed capital reserve withdrawal. As you may know, the Board of Education is planning a next generation library and a state of an art cafeteria for our middle and high school studios. This initiative is expected to be presented to voters through a composition. Since the funding will come entirely from the district's reserves, there will be no impact to the taxpayers. I included three pictures of two of the library, one of the cafeteria, and one of hallway, which includes seating. So what are our budget challenges? Well, on the appropriation side, we see that we have a decline in student enrollment. Over the past ten years, our district has seen constantly a twelve point five percent decline in student population, which is consistent with the trends across many of the districts on Long Island. Rate of inflation versus the two percent tax cap. As I mentioned earlier, the C P I for two thousand and twenty-four was two point nine five, and the district is limited to a two percent increase. We are also faced with contract negotiations through five bargaining units. We have unknown C S E recommendations and unfunded placements. There's always an increase in transportation costs. And finally, New York State unfunded loans. So on the revenue side, we have a few challenges. First is the burden to the tax, the taxpayers. We realize that over ninety percent of our budget is funded by the taxpayers. We are also looking at a decrease in finding our transportation pain in Croatia, and that is due primarily with our change in our wealth ratio. That's given to us by the state. And finally, declining interest rates. We, as we put our money into banks, just like we do at home, we look at interest rates, and they are a source of revenue for us. So finally, I just want to end this presentation with the superintendent and the Board of Education's priorities. It's always happened to support our academic programs, the safety and secure, uh, security improvements, facilities upgrade, and also to maintain a strong fiscal freedom. And all of this is kept in mind when we're building a budget. So what are the next steps? On, on February eleventh, we're going to discuss the non-instructional budget codes. March fourth, instructional budget code codes, including special education and athletics. And then on March twenty-sixth, transportation, capital projects, and we will present the draft budget summary. This is the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Karen. You're so thoughtful and thorough. We really appreciate it. Are there any questions? Are there any questions or comments from the board? We will move on to our consent agenda. Along with the grant from Blake Blumcrance's office, I also wanna point out, we have a gentleman, John Colley, with us tonight. John, thank you for joining us. He started with us as a lead replacement, and he will be appointed this evening as a social studies teacher. We're thrilled to have you. And he's also our co-adviser for the National Honor Society. So, he's really come in full force and acclimated to our district and our clubs, and we're thrilled to have you join us today. Thank you for being here. Does anyone have any... Does anyone on the board have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? I will need a motion to approve. George, a second. Matt, all in favor? All abstained? It's a move. Do we have any additional public comment? Thank you. If I could welcome Alexandra Peroni of Parkdale.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alexandria. I have two children at AMP, Sergio and Sophia. I wanna address the board about a situation that's been going on the past month, and I wanna know what thoughts are on it. My son Sergio has not received PT since December twentieth, after Terry Bigdunk was let go. And I understand that somebody was hired, but I do also understand that she has not started working yet. And I would love to know how she is going to make up all the sessions from all the children that are missing PT. And I would also like to talk about the lack of communication between your administration and the staff, because I don't understand how a chairperson is not informed of what is going on with the children that she's supposed to be taking care of in the school district.
You obviously, you've had wonderful conversations, I believe, very well with your children. We don't have chairpeople, so I don't know who to speak to. We have to quickly call my office.
I have called the head of pupil personnel multiple times, and she has yet to call me back.
Unfortunately, the board is not able to comment in a public meeting.
And why is that?
Well, we don't speak about individual students.
Well, what is the board going to do about the lack of PT services to the district?
To be honest, this is the first that the board has heard of this.
I don't think that is true.
We have received zero communication from you. I'm sorry, we've never received an email or a phone call. So, this is the first that the Board of Education has heard of this?
So, we are on the way out that you're in violation of multiple AEPs because you're not receiving PT services?
I'm going to discuss again that we will not speak of any personal child services in a public meeting.
I'm not discussing a personal child. I am discussing PT across the board. There has not been PT services. Thank you.
I met the individual that was hired. So, my understanding, I have no more information than you do. I have nothing to hide. I was part of the final interview process. She was hired. And my understanding was that Mrs. Dr. Bellis had sent down a letter, and the woman couldn't start right that time that she thought she was gonna start, because she had to give her more time than she had originally given to her former employer. But my understanding was that she was on premise, and that she was making up services. That's what I was informed of. I have no more information. I would give it to you if I had it. But I did personally meet her. Her credentials were superior. And my understanding is that she had already started. So, you have to get in touch. I will be more than happy to relay the message to, you know, Dr. Bellis, that you had a concern. But unfortunately, it's on premise, and I don't want you to worry. Because this is the first time I've heard about it. I just knew that there was a two-week delay. And that she was trying to make up services on the extra days that she wouldn't typically be here. She only works three days, that she was working the alternate days to make up the time. That's all I know. Just you.
You're always welcome to contact the board. Our email address is board@locustvalleyschools.org. You're more than welcome to communicate at any time. And our phone numbers are all individually listed in the calendar every year.
Okay, I thought that calling Dr. Vetta and Mr. Simon and your pupil personnel office would be sufficient, but I guess that was not correct?
I'm sure it was sufficient to bring it to them. But if you're going to bring it to the Board of Education, then we would need some form of communication beforehand, of course. Again, you're welcome to communicate with the board at any time. All of our information is listed in the district calendar, along with the website. But again, we would never speak of individual services in public. It's against really any board. The state of New York would never do that. But again, we're under very strict rules, as I discussed earlier this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. At this stage, we're going to ask for a motion. We're going to a second session. Margaret, seconded by Matt. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all. Have a great night.